Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's now six o'clock by my clock. Call this meeting to order. First meeting of the month of November. Thank all of you for coming this evening. I would welcome.
Autumn and Chadlin.
President.
And Kennedy.
Here.
Autumn and Wilson.
Present.
Autumn and Dubois.
Present.
Autumn and Chadlin.
Here.
Autumn and Chadlin.
Here.
Autumn and Lynnus.
Here.
Mary Alba Cora.
With the quorum, uh, what woman and autumn would you review the agenda? There's one, at least one adjustment we need to make on the agenda. Item number five, please. But a removal from the agenda because there's things that we need to verify. That came to my attention this evening. We're going to remove that from the agenda. Have it on our next agenda. Once we get things verified.
Mayor, I do have one other adjustment on the agenda. Item number four point seven. Um, those numbers have changed, so um, the wifi replacement. City of Moss Point facilities, the amount of, that's fifteen thousand, five hundred, thirty-one dollars and forty cents. Still, um, with the additional estimated cost of two thousand, two hundred dollars to prepare Suellen Gym for the installation. The total amount is seventeen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-one dollars and forty cents. I just need to make the adjustment.
That amount again, please?
What? Which one?
That amount again, please, the total amount?
Thousand, three hundred, thirty-one dollars?
Seventeen thousand, seven thirty.
Seven thirty-one, I'm sorry.
And forty cents.
And forty cents.
Thank you. There anything in the consent agenda that any board member would like to move down to the main agenda for a further discussion?
I've got, I've got one question, mayor, that I would just like to ask. It doesn't have to be me. Back a year or so ago, we were considering a study of a traffic signal over at Dutch Bio in six thirteen. Is that still somewhere on the radar?
Oh, yeah, is that part of our?
It was where we were doing this study for downtown traffic study.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, uh, on that, uh, on. I don't, I don't know the timing of it right now, but it is part of, still part of the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
We'll be more specific about it on next meeting.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Uh, Autumn and Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me
honor and extreme pleasure to present to some and introduce to others our
our guest minister, guest pastor for tonight. Reverend Dr. Robert Edward Fox. Currently, our new pastor at the, at our church, my church, New Zion Missionary Baptist Church. Dr. Fox, the former pastor of New Salem Missionary Baptist Church of Oxford, Mississippi. And as I mentioned, currently serving as our new pastor at New Zion Missionary Baptist Church of Moss Point. Dr. Fox earned an associate and applied science degree in general management at El Paso Community College. Bachelor of Science degree in human services from Upper Iowa University. A master of science degree in human relations from the University of Oklahoma. Doctor of philosophy degree, PhD in higher education of leadership from Capella University. A doctor of philosophy degree, PhD in Christian education from Jacksonville Theological Seminary, Jacksonville, Florida. He was awarded a diploma of Christian education and diploma of pastoral studies in Christian education. And he is a certified dean of Christian education from the Sunday School Publishing Board, Nashville, Tennessee. Dr. Fox is currently a professor of Live Bible College and Seminary Incorporated in Ocean Springs. And he's appointed as a faculty member for the National Baptist Convention, USA Incorporated, Congress of Christian Education. Is a retired educator, administrator, adjunct professor of criminal justice at the University of Mississippi in Oxford. Say, Ole Miss, and we're not going to hold it against. Dr. Fox is a retired command sergeant major in the US Army. Were served our country proudly twenty-seven years and eight months. He's married to Sister Sandra K. Fox, and they've been happily married for thirty. You please join me in giving a river city welcome to Dr. Robert Edward Fox, PhD.
Good evening, Billie Knight, and to all of you, all of us, thank you all for having me. And this staff here in this great city, we're glad to be here. And, uh, part of the ongoing success that's occurring right here in Moss Point. The help of Father come in the name of Jesus on this day as we assemble before the mayor, all of the aldermen, the administration here within the Moss Point community. We thank you for making it possible for all of them to be here on this day to carry out the work that is before them. Thank you for all of the people who have assembled here within the Misslininay ears to the work that's at hand. Pray that you will continue to crown all hands with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as they move forward with the work at hand. The Lord would, uh, help them enable wisdom to hover throughout this assembly and beyond. Know that you're able, and we believe that you will answer our prayers. We pray, Lord, for all family members of these leaders of this great city. That you would keep them in your tender love and care as their spouses carry out the work, the family members carry out the work that is before them. These things we ask in your name, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Doc. And he takes you to coming as. Welcome you and Mrs. Fox to Moss Point.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good pledge.
Thank you. We're down to, uh, item number two, presentation. Of Torres for Tots here to make a presentation. Uh, we have, uh, fire department to make a presentation and recognize Lieutenant Lyons. And I have a couple of presentations that I would like to make. I will come down to be a part of that.
Good evening, good evening.
For you.
Half of Torres for Tots Jackson County, where our coordinator is Tracy Powell. I am the assistant coordinator for Torres for Tots, Jackson County, LaShaw. The operations, we need to start to present. Yeah, we want to present this to the board for Mayor Billy Knight. Um, he has really been instrumental in assisting with the effort that Torres for Tots has been making in the Jackson County community. Uh, so on behalf of the US Marine Corps, Torres for Tots of Jackson County, in appreciation for your support to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Torres for Tots campaign. We present you, Billy Knight, with this plaque as, as the rock of Mississippi, which is a nonprofit organization. Um, in appreciation for your support. We really appreciate what's done to make this effort a success, and we look forward to continuing this partnership.
Well, thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Hi, Kennedy, on behalf of our board. Happy to, uh, got me to face these things. There are a lot of people behind me to help me get this done. So I don't want to accept this alone. I accept this somewhere after the board and our staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And just like this.
Yes, yeah, I was coming over, just staying. Okay, so, uh, good evening.
Evening.
Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming. Uh, this is Ms. Samantha Bignail from Easter Federal Credit Union. Several months ago, they, uh, reached out and we nominated one, uh, one person from the Moss Point Fire Department as the first responder of the year. Uh, we, we sent in Lieutenant Marcus Lyons, and they, uh, he was one of the ones that was picked. Uh, and we are honored and we are proud to bring him in front of the board today. I'm going to read the write-up that was sent in for him, and then Ms. Samantha will present him with his plaque. The Moss Point Fire Department about to nominate Lieutenant Marcus Lyons for the first responder of the year. Lieutenant Lyons began his career with Moss Point Fire Department in January of two thousand and seventeen. Since his employment, Lieutenant Lyons has excelled in his areas of department due to his drive to better himself and our department. Promoted to the rank of lieutenant, Marcus Lyons is the station manager at Central Station. He has taken the lead in training his crew to ensure they are ready for any emergency call. Lieutenant Lyons ensures that his team maintains professional training hours, handles daily operations, and prepares his staff for emergencies. Lieutenant Lyons ensures they are completely diligently from the most minor task to the most challenging job. Lieutenant Marcus Lyons has volunteered to take the path through being the department mechanic. Lieutenant Lyons' knowledge of how a fire truck operates behind the technical ground is crucial in keeping the fleet ready to respond to any call. Above performing basic mechanics in all trucks, Lieutenant Lyons maintains documentation on fleet prevented maintenance and operations. Lieutenant Lyons is instrumental in fire pump testing our fleet to stay under the standard of operations for fire after that. Lieutenant Lyons' hard work, dedication, and passion to serve the citizens and visitors of the city of Moss Point shows his commitment to keeping up with the high traditions of the Moss Point Fire Department.
Congratulations.
And on behalf of Kisa Federal, we want to present to the first responder of the year award for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proud of you.
Uh, I, uh, Samantha, the call's asked, uh, we presented this to Mr. Lyons at the fire department, and we want to always make it more public and let him know and let the public know what our firemen are doing, and let Mr. Lyons know that we appreciate what he's doing, and, uh, Samantha, thank you for coming. Thanks to the, uh, credit union, Eastern Credit Union as well. Thank you. Uh, the last two, I have two presentations I want to make. That these people know nothing about. That I'm going to do this. You know, we talk about leadership a lot. And how the water deals that we have and good effective leaders. And if we're going to do that in the city of Moss Point, I think we need to start growing. We start growing our own leader. Start developing our own leader. And one of the truths that we have to do that is the Jackson County Leadership Program. Is headed by Jackson County Chamber of Commerce. Nineteen ninety-two. Nineteen ninety-two. I graduated from that class. And classes have been going on since I was in the third class. I was in the third class of the program, Jackson County Chamber of Commerce. On point. That's had three other people to go to that program. In twenty sixteen, in twenty fifteen, uh, uh, Autumn and Lynnus. And Sue Wright graduated from the program. In twenty sixteen, Mr. Chad Smith, that was in recreation, graduated from the program. So all of those years that we've had at program. We've only had three people to move there. And Jackson County is trying to develop leaders. So why not Moss Point be a part of that and try to develop leaders? So I want you to look at this pretty picture. The one on the left. Tricia Dickman just graduated from this program in twenty twenty. Tricia Dickman, as you come, I feel the night, which you formally recognize, express sincere appreciation for the example of personal growth and leadership development. As a model by Tricia Dickman, I'll see the court. As a member of the city of Moss Point team, volunteer leadership professionals. Participating in the year long program, the piece of Jackson County. Facilitate, uh, Jackson County, but facilitated by Jackson County Chamber of Commerce. And witness thereof, I use to affix my name to the seal of the city of Moss Point. So, uh, seven. Twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
And look at this pretty picture. Daris Wilson, come down there. Daris just graduated this year. From the leadership. And we wanted Daris to know how proud we are of him. Be a part of the program, yeah. You read the sign. I want your voice, yeah. But there, congratulations. Thank you so much for that. Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. We're down to the agenda. Are there any public comments?
We have Tom.
Yeah. Yes, okay, Tom.
Mayor, board, I'm just really delighted to be speaking on behalf of your director of public works, Roy Hudson. Because his department and committed developer are working hand to hand. Put feet on something that you've had a lot of passion around for a long time, and that is cleaning up Moss Point and sustaining it for a long period of time. And I'm delighted to kind of give credit to an awful lot of folks who it has happened. I mean, thanks, thanks. Thankfully, we have folks like Ruth Spiller, for example, who can print our conference daily, if she cares to, about not littering anymore. Can she not dare? Uh, and Chuck Redmond, please say, Chuck Redmond has made a career out of cleaning up Moss Point, has he not? What a wonderful legacy to build on, right? But how do we sustain it, you know? That's been the thing. So what we'll really need to do is be constantly reminding folks that there's a better way to get rid of stuff you don't want than to just throw it on the side of the road or out the window, right? And so what we've done is we, we took advantage of the fact that the Chamber of Commerce and Chevron sponsored a program called Five C. And it basically gives us resources to develop those visual reminders that, um, can trick the conscience of people in some area where they might be inclined to want to put something and decide, maybe I should, right? Tell you, Roy's team Saturday worked very hard, and we had every department within, within that group represented out there. We had, um, uh, mechanics and folks from the sewer department, a little bit of everybody out there cleaning up that illegal dump site under the bridges on Highway sixty-three as it approaches the river from the south. We got it cleaned up again, right? And went on down Orange Road Road and cleaned up another site around the bridge that's down that way. And this time, there are signs posted that look very much like that, only bigger, right? That just say, please, don't trash our reputation, right? So we're excited to be able to continue that theme, which, by the way, was developed by a group from Christie Fountain Advertising in Ocean Springs. And this has been a really interesting effort because it's involved an awful lot of people. And I just want to, I know it, it, the fear of leaving somebody out, I'm still going to mention some names because there's just too much that's happened here. Um, Melanie Landisell, for example, from Chevron, was tremendously important in putting the program together with the chamber. Um, Jonathan Brannet has donated ten brand new barrels that we can take that artwork and put a wrap around it. And when we have really kind of cool events going on out here, we have something really attractive for people to put their trash in, okay? Um, so Chevron deserves her recognition. Trailhead Media is, it has donated, uh, a portion of their digital media sign on sixty-three coming from the north. And so when you go by there out over the next few days, take a look, okay, because you'll see it shining brightly up there. Um, iHeart Media, WMJYFM and WJCD FM are, are doing public service announcements for us at no cost, okay? Um, Paige Roberts, of course, uh, working with Chevron has been tremendously instrumental in the process. But at Christie County, we've had Yoman's work done by Peggy and Fletcher, Debbie Feister, and Bailey Slay. So I just want to thank everyone who worked there. Um, these yard signs that you see there are kind of cool, aren't they? They're kind of neat. Um, we just got to figure out the right place to put those. But in the, in addition to those, we have these, um, um, posters that actually go in storefronts so that people can have a way to kind of advertise as well. Each of the aldermen now has a sticker you can put on your car or whatever you think is appropriate. And we have others too as well. And, uh, in fact, if you have a kid, I have some places to put your sticker on their car, I'll give you one. So, uh, that's it. I just wanted to say thanks, and, and we appreciate the, the opportunity. And, and thanks to the aldermen and the mayor for putting it on this idea of cleaning up Moss Point. Thank you, guys. That's not a choice.
Thank you, Tom. Autumn, any of y'all have any questions? Step out of bounds in this to gesture. I would like to make an announcement in these, in this comment section that I think we've been trying to get our hands around, and and we've really got some definite information now that we can share that I think the people of the city would be proud of. Please keep these things in mind. We'll be talking about this more, advertising more, but on November the thirteenth. The notice to proceed to do the work on Cimberly Drive will be issued on November the thirteenth. The work on Cimberly Drive. The notice to proceed will be issued. So that work will begin. It may need, will need time, of course, for contractors to gear up and, and get all their equipment, but the notice to proceed will be issued on the thirteenth of November. On the ninth of November, we will open bids for the work on Bay Avenue, which is sanitation sewage improvement project. And we anticipate that work will begin the first of twenty twenty-four. That's Bay Avenue Sanitation Sewer Improvement Project. Work to begin first of twenty twenty-four. Also, November ninth, we open bids will be for Griffin Street and Grant Street Drainage Improvement Project. The work expected to begin first of twenty twenty-four. Grant and Griffin Streets Drainage Improvement Project. Construction to begin first of twenty twenty-four. Also, November ninth, open bids for the citywide water meter replacement project. That will take, the bid will be open on the ninth. After the bids are taken at that point, you know, we will do an evaluation of the bidders to see who has the best bid, that's from Moss Point. And we've decided at that point who will get the work done, and that will take another week or two after November ninth. But November ninth will be the beginning of us replacing these bad water meters. Take time to get all this in place. We just want the public to know. That on November ninth will be the beginning of that process. Then we're down to item number four, the consent agenda. The pleasure of the board, that's item four point one through four point seventeen. The pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second by Autumn Wilson and second by Autumn and Chairman. That we approve the consent agenda, item four point one through four point seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item number five, main agenda, five point one. Ready?
Approved decline and request to transfer firefighter Andrew Lawrence certified from part-time employee status to full-time employee status submitted by Danning Way, fire chief.
Move. Second, motion bottom, Chairman, circled by Autumn Wilson. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
Five point two, approved decline and request to reclassify Officer Rebecca Rasinin to the budgeted vacant position of investigator and include a salary increase to reflect the new classification submitted by Brandon Ashley, Chief of Police.
Motion to approve with a question.
Second.
Motion by Autumn Wilson, circled by Autumn Lynnus.
Chief, how does that help you in patrol?
We're pursuing a, uh, three down.
Three down.
This is vacant over here. One less to get.
And how to put this at five?
Four. Yeah, three.
Not including the sergeant?
That's included.
Including the sergeant? Okay. Okay, thank you.
How many more bakers you got, you? How many more bakers you have?
Three, 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 got two. He's passed the civil service debt, they were back around check. Three, 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 four. Got two that's faster, civil service staff, they were background checked. Would just go ahead.
These would be brand-new, Chief?
Okay.
You know the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ahs, ahs.
Five point three, we have moved to the next agenda, Sergeant J. Five point four, approved decline, adopted a claim provided that all entries therein are true, correct, properly entered, non-produlent, impending availability of funds submitted by the Finance Department.
Next to approve.
Second.
Motion bottom, one, Wilson, circle by Chapman. Is there any question? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ahs, ahs. What are you doing, Jones?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ahs, ahs. Thank you all for coming.